Hey everyone, thank you for joining us tonight for this District 5 Forum. Let's hear it from the studio audience we've got. I'm Jake Mangas, President and CEO of the Redding Chamber of Commerce. And on behalf of the Chamber and our Board of Directors, I welcome you to this evening's Candidates Forum for Shasta County District 5 Supervisor here at the Ballroom of the Sheraton Hotel in Redding. I'd like to welcome those listening on KCNR on the radio and through the audio livestream. Carl Bott tells me that the recording of the broadcast will be made available at kcnr1460.com. Kcnr1460.com. Definitely that'll be up tomorrow, he says. So I'm grateful for Pat Cartridge setting up all the audio today for us, as well as Ferris Wheel Films. You'll notice some of the cameras with us today. Ferris Wheel Films is recording the forum to be shared with a broader audience later this month through the Chamber's digital outreach. So stay connected to the Redding Chamber of Commerce social media on Facebook and Instagram for updates, and be sure to subscribe to our e-newsletter at the homepage of reddingchamber.com. The Redding Chamber of Commerce is an association of businesses organized to improve the business climate and contribute to the economic vitality of its membership and the greater Redding area. The Chamber is a convener of leaders and influencers, a catalyst for business growth, and a champion for a stronger community. One of the key ways we carry out our mission is through business advocacy and education. Recently, the Chamber pivoted in response to the results of a recent survey of our membership to discontinue the practice of endorsing candidates and funding candidate campaigns. Our members, yeah, there was a little applause there for a second. Wow, okay. Our members told us clearly that they want information they can trust, but they don't need us to tell them how to vote. So in that spirit, this is a response to that. Tonight, we're connecting our business community with the candidates, asking questions that have come from the members of the Chamber. It's our hope that you will have a better idea of where each candidate stands on the business issues of greatest importance to you. Hope you had an opportunity to visit with our candidates during the meet and greet. As their schedule allows, I'm sure that this evening afterwards, participants will be happy to visit with you to address any unanswered questions that you may have following the forum. So the format for tonight, it will be like this. There will be eight total questions. Each candidate will have up to two minutes to answer each question. Other than the first and last question, there will also be time for each candidate to offer up to a one-minute rebuttal or additional comment should they wish to do so. If they don't wish to do so, they can just say, "I'll pass," and that's fine. I will indicate the amount of time allotted for each answer and rebuttal. Erin Holes with us tonight, the Chamber's VP of Marketing and Communications, and tonight she's the official timekeeper. When your time is up, she will ring the bell like this. Please respect the bell. It will allow us to stay on schedule this evening and give equal opportunity to each candidate. Now, I am going to introduce to you tonight's candidates. Immediately to my left and working my way across, we'll do that. First, Baron Browning, Mayor of Anderson. Next to him, Colt Roberts, and he's a truck driver. And next to him, Chris Kelstrom, retired business manager. And also running in District 5 are Alex Madrigal and Frank Laboue. They were invited this evening and were unable to join us. So we'll proceed with the three that did show up. We can begin with our first question, but I'm going to set the order and make it easy on myself, and I'll just start with Baron, or Mr. Browning. We'll do it this way, sorry guys. We'll say, "Mr. Browning, Mr. Roberts, Mr. Kelstrom." We're gonna be doing that all night. You may say, "Well, that's my dad or my father," but I'm just gonna do it. We'll do it as a staggered start, so the second question, we'll start with Mr. Roberts, then to Mr. Kelstrom, and then to Mr. Browning, and so on. So this is probably the hardest job that I've got all night. So beginning with Mr. Browning. These are opening remarks. So questions you might consider answering, since this is focused on the business community, is what do you want the business community to know about you? And how will you improve the business climate in Shasta County? You have two minutes.
Sure. Thank you, Jake, and thank you to the Redding Chamber. Let's give them a round for him, huh? We appreciate having the forum for sure. I'm Baron Browning. I'm a husband. My wife Suzie's here tonight. Love you babe. My daughter Brianna is over there, and I'm a businessman. I'm a Marine Corps veteran, and as you've heard, I've served on the Anderson City Council the last eight years. So from a business perspective, what have we done? What have I done in Anderson, and what can we move forward with in Shasta County? So we formed our own EDC three years ago to start bringing in business, and I would tell you that as to date, we are on our eighth new business that we brought into Anderson in the last, you know, three years. We've been working on it for five, but formed the Anderson Community Economic Development three years ago formally. And with that, as you know, with all of those things, when you start bringing business in, you had to get there somehow. And how did we get there? Well, we started with public safety. So we started with public safety, and we've taken our city police force from 12 officers to 24, so we doubled that. And what you get with public safety is then you get those houses being built because people feel safe. And so when the rooftops come, you start getting those businesses going, "That's the place I want to be because the rooftops are being built." It's all drive, right? One after the other, the other. And so those things just happen naturally when you start with public safety first. And so public safety in Shasta County has to happen the same way. We've got to support our sheriff, get deputies on the street, get correctional officers in there. Obviously, we have to build a new jail to hold those inmates, and we have to have services for them while they're in there. And that's really important so that they come out being a productive member of our society, whether that's mental health or drug and alcohol rehabilitation. So those things have to happen in my book. And so I appreciate your time. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Roberts, your turn, two minutes.
My name's Colt Roberts. I'm a father. I'm a husband. The reason I got into this is because, like a lot of us, we are tired of seeing government doing things behind our backs. We have out-of-control crime, and people have been going to the board about this issue for a very long time, and nothing's getting done. We need to get things done. I'm a manager for a small business here in town. I take care of all our billing, our pricing, our deliveries, and another employee. So in that aspect, I think that I have an ability to do that. I have an ability to work with other people and work on the issues that we agree on. And we can all agree on that our crime is out of control, that we need a place to put the people who commit the crimes here. So that would be my number-one priority as supervisor, is getting that done. But at the same time, the role of government is to listen to the people, not lecture them. So I would be listening to the voices of the people and going in the direction that they wanted me to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kelstrom, two minutes.
All right. My name's Chris Kelstrom. I was born and raised right here in Shasta County. I'm a native. Graduated from an enterprise high school in '86, as did my parents before me. In 1987, one year later, at the ripe old age of 19, I was managing a business down in Anderson. I was managing a grocery store at 19-years-old. Did that for the next 15 years. Ended my management career out in Happy Valley, managing a store out there. So I'm pretty business-friendly. I understand how to run a business. You know, in a grocery store, you have department heads, you have departments, you have labor dollars, you have a budget. I never had a $600 million budget for a year, but you know, that would be kind of nice. So as far as, you know, businesses and how to bring businesses here into Shasta County, I think one of the things we need to do is make it more business-friendly, knock off some of these regulations, some of these permits and code enforcements. And you know, I have a friend in Cottonwood, started creating a, is that one second already?
No, you've got one minute.
Oh, I got one minute, okay.
Look at the visual.
I see, gotcha. All right. So I have a friend in Cottonwood that was creating a product. You know, a lot of licenses and stuff, he wanted to go legitimate. It was a hobby. He bought a building in downtown Cottonwood, was going to remodel it and expand and put in a business, and the county shut him down, you know, over some permit, some couldn't move a wall, some whatever. So I think we need to make this entire county more business-friendly, need to stop running businesses off, need to make it easier, open our doors for them, and help them come to this county and help them create businesses. We need manufacturing jobs, and we need, you know, businesses. So that's how I would probably encourage businesses to come to Shasta County.
Thank you. And I think I mentioned this earlier, but I'll mention it again. The questions that we're gonna ask here in the middle, these did come from the results of a Chamber membership survey that was conducted in February. And it looks like we have a new participant joining us tonight as well. Thank you for being with us. Yep, actually, you hit it just in time because we were doing opening remarks, so that means it's Frank Laboue's turn. And with us is Frank Laboue. He is a businessman, a contractor, and an inventor, according to his official candidate statement. So I'm curious about that inventor part. So Mr. Laboue, you have two minutes to give us some opening comments, and some questions you might consider answering are, "What do you want the business community to know about you?" Since this is a business community's forum. "And how will you improve the business climate in Shasta County?" And you have two minutes, and at the conclusion of two minutes, you'll hear a bell rung like this. So our request is that the bell be respected so that we can stay on time tonight. Okay, there you go. You have two minutes.
This is my invention. It was a Trump swamp deck that we sold on Amazon. And the other thing is, I'm a contractor. We have 45,000 homes that have burned from Paradise to Napa to all the way into Oregon. If we build 1,000 homes a year, it'll take us 45 years to rebuild those homes. So the industry of building homes is, I think, the key to jumpstart our building industry. So I build with insulated concrete forms. There are 50 in the walls. I talked to a lady in Shingle Town, she has a 300-square-foot house, and she said it costs $150 to heat and cool it. So a 3,000-square-foot house. So they're very energy-efficient. So I use the best techniques that we have, and we can have our ICF blocks built right here in Redding. We have to ship them from Nebraska. You're shipping air, so we might as well just manufacture them right here. We have empty warehouses. And so I want to be a leader in this area of jump-starting Shasta County and bringing industry in, jobs. The jail is a big thing. I worked the annex in Crystal Creek, they're both gone. They were wonderful for, I used to pick up five inmates, and we'd build tire chains. So, and I'd take them back, and so you have a jail there that they show up at 7:00, they leave at 4:00, and you don't have to feed them. So the other big thing is the marijuana grows. A marijuana plant takes six gallons a day to grow, and you got 20,000 marijuana plants growing in just, I had 160 acres. The sheriff said there was 100, there was 20,000 marijuana plants. That's 10 million gallons through a harvest, and they're sucking our wells dry. So we need to get on the grows. We need to get business going. Is that a bell?
That was the bell, yep.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Laboue. So as I was saying, the questions came from the results of a membership survey, and we are staying true to our word in being consistent with asking questions as a result of how that turned out. So question number two, we're gonna begin with Mr. Roberts. And if you'd like, at any time for me to repeat the question, I'm happy to do that as well. So Mr. Roberts, "California has made affordable housing a priority for all communities throughout the state. Do you support affordable housing efforts? And if so, in your opinion, where should the housing go in Shasta County?" You have two minutes.
Ultimately, that's up to the people to decide. I know that in Cottonwood, we had an issue with this quite a long time ago, and they wanted to put affordable housing behind our holiday market there, and the people just said no, because a lot of that stuff comes with crime, and I, you know, it would have to be managed the right way, and I just don't see that happening right now. But I would like to hear from the people what their input is on that and where they would want it.
Thank you. Thank you. There we go. Clearing my throat. Okay, Mr. Kelstrom, same question, two minutes.
Of course, of course, I'm all for affordable housing. Who isn't? Everybody would like affordable housing. I would like affordable housing. You know, as we continue to increase the permit fees for a house or apartment buildings or whatever, then we scream that we need more affordable housing. So maybe we should look at the fees and the cost involved before we even build the affordable housing. And this is kind of ridiculous. So we want more affordable housing, and then we just keep raising fees and raising fees and raising fees. My first foray into politics was actually over affordable housing. We had moved down to a Galt area for an ex-wife's schooling anyhow. Got our first house down there, and next to it was a big empty field. And I'd asked the builder, "What's gonna go on the field?" And he said, "It's R1," and I'm in my 20s, I don't know what R1 is. It's just more single-family residential, more homes, you know? Okay, well, that's great. So once all the houses in the neighborhood were sold, and they got top dollar for every house in the neighborhood, oh, lo and behold, the city council had taken some grant money from the federal government and had already planned on doing it, and they rezoned it to R3, and they were gonna be low-income triplexes. Now, I have no problem with low-income triplexes, but I would prefer you build those first and then let me decide whether I want to pay full market value for a house next to them. But they got all the houses in the neighborhood sold for top dollar, so they're gonna get their top taxes out of those houses the rest of their lives, and then sprung it on all the neighbors. So at that point, the for-sale signs went up like dominos down the road. Every house went up for sale. Turned out to be a blessing in disguise because that's how we got back here. We said, "We're gonna sell our house, there's no sense buying another one down here, let's get back home, let's go home." So that was my first insight into politics when I watched, and these people had already made up their minds. We sat there and talked to them till we were blue in the face, they didn't care, they'd already taken the money, it was a done deal. So left a bad taste in my mouth, one of the reasons I'm here right now. So affordable housing, sure, let's cut the permits first and see where we go from there.
Thank you. Mr. Laboue, same question, two minutes.
You asked a contractor about building? Sure, I'm for anything that we can build, put people to work. These insulated concrete forms, they go up real quick, they're energy-efficient, they're fireproof. We can go ahead and give breaks on fire insurance. I believe in committees. I believe we should have committees for water, fire, and affordable housing. And what we do is build a website, and people don't have to go to a supervisor's meeting. They can just check in and give us advice and put in their two cents. I believe that at the end of the year, the person with the best advice would have a holiday trip to Hawaii. And then you take the rest of them and you throw them in a hat, and you give another couple a nice trip to Hawaii. So we can do this. We just don't have to invent a wheel. We just have to apply what's already out there, and I think we can do this. I think we can turn Shasta County around. I think, I have other ideas, but we'll settle with that one.
Thank you. Mr. Browning, same question, two minutes.
Yeah, I think we definitely need more affordable housing. But where does it go, right? So we zone land around the areas and make sure, one, they have enough water for that area. I know Cottonwood did not have enough water to subsidize that facility in Cottonwood. So, you know, does it have all the right infrastructure? Does it have water? Does it have electricity? Does it have all those things that it need? And then you put those in. And how else do you do that? You also go after and look at other companies that are doing very similar things. So Anderson did just that, and we incorporated some of the county into Anderson, and now UF South Sites is being built right there. And UF South Sites is a company that actually builds modular, if you will, Lego-style facilities, and they're low-income housing apartments. They build them right there on-site. You save about one-third the cost you would if you were gonna build it on-site with prevailing wage, which cuts those costs down that we're paying now. So instead of $300,000 a door, now you're paying $200,000 a door. And that's how you start getting those things cut back, so that you're building more of them and spending less money. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Roberts, beginning with you, you have an opportunity for a minute, time for additional comments if you'd like.
Oh, yeah, one of the issues in Cottonwood was a lack of water, but there was also the lack of being able to transport that sewer. They didn't have the infrastructure for that, and they would've had to tear out basically an entire road, and it would've costed millions and millions of dollars in infrastructure just to get it to where they could put that many houses there. And when people mention property values, I do live in a nice neighborhood, and I don't want to live next to certain areas that do lower values because the low-income housing does lower property values.
Thank you for that. Mr. Kelstrom, would you like to take your additional minute?
Pretty good.
Okay. Mr. Laboue, one minute additional for you if you'd like.
Okay, well, you say low-income housing, you know, they're families. I don't know, we gotta provide for families, you know? Some of them I've seen, they have playgrounds, they have, you know, have community centers, pools and stuff. I think they're mislabeled as low-income. You know, they're a step up, I would say, all right? For people who have a family that need maybe some more schooling and stuff to step up a little bit. So I wouldn't label them as low-income. You know, they're part of our family, you know? They're Americans, we need to take care of them.
Thank you, Mr. Laboue. Mr. Browning, any additional comments?
Sure, I'd also like us to look at workforce housing. And I know Donna Jamian's bringing in 3D printing, and I think that's a good thing so that we can start having affordable housing for those that are actually going to work. I think that's super important. So we not only need to look at low-income housing, but also workforce housing so that those that are going to work. I know we're having issues right now with the interest rates going up, and those people that did qualify are now not able to qualify. And so it's that type of housing where it's costing less, doing more. And I know that the labor unions have bought into that as well, and they're buying into supporting that as well. And I think if we're putting those in there, then we're having workforce housing taken care of as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the third question. This one is going to begin with Mr. Kelstrom, and we get into public safety. "Do you support the Wagon Wheel of Justice proposal? And if you do, how would the county finance the capital construction and the ongoing operating expense?" You have two minutes.
So I was able to go to that board meeting because it was in an afternoon, and I did see the presentation of the wagon wheel. Looks like a great idea, but at the same time, it looks like it's going to take 10 or 12 years to get that up and running. I don't think we have 10 or 12 years at this point. I think we are pretty much borderlining a state of emergency right now with our crime out there on the streets and no jail beds. So I personally don't want to wait 10 to 12 years. And of course, the cost of it, I've never yet seen a government project come in on time or on budget. So the $300 million they're talking will probably be half a billion dollars by the time it's done. And if they say it's gonna take 10 years, it'll probably take 15 years. So, you know, I'm all for it, it looks like a great, it looked like a great jail, looked like a great thing, but at half a billion dollars in 10 years, I think we need to do something right now. I think we need to increase, either increase our current jail, build another jail, a smaller jail, holding cells, whatever we need to do, but we need to do something, and we need to do it rather quickly. Again, I don't want to wait 10 years. I don't want to wait till, you know, 20, 30, 5 to, before we can finally start addressing some of the crime on our streets. I think we need to do it right now. So the wagon wheel of justice looks great. It's going to be more expensive than they planned, it's going to take longer than they planned, and I personally would rather get a quicker, more expedient plan in place now and get some of these people off the streets that are making our quality of life go down every single day. So that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Laboue, the question's to you now, and you have two minutes as well.
Okay, I haven't seen the wagon wheel plan, but I have a bigger plan. I think Shasta County should be the center hub of a wagon wheel for the other counties. We build a jail, we build mental health, we build rehabs, and the other counties now, they spoke into Shasta County, okay? And they pay us, right, to take care of their mentally ill and get help for them, take care of their prisoners, right? They pay us for the prisoners and stuff, and this pays for the jail and stuff. And we become the hub, and that way there, we can finance it, and it'll help the other counties. I think we could do that with the marijuana grows. I think we can have a committee that come up. If you're gonna be fined $50 for washing your car, well, maybe the property owners ought to be charged $250,000 for growing marijuana and sucking it out of the ground and the creeks, okay? And you put a lien against their property, and then you turn around and you sell their property after so many, after their lien and stuff, and we finance the jails. We take the growers, and we, instead of having sheriffs going out there pulling out marijuana plants, we have the growers go out and pull up their own plants, right? And the sheriffs guard them, and that way there, we accomplished, you know, it's kill two birds with one stone, maybe.
Thank you. Mr. Browning, same question, two minutes.
Sure, thank you. Well, I think the wagon wheel approach was just one, and I think we need to look at numerous ways that we can build a jail. But we definitely have to have the services involved with those things. And the cost to rehabilitate in existing buildings is probably about the same as it costs to build a new jail in today's world. That's just the reality of it all. So we have to look at all aspects of what's out there, what's been designed recently, what was the most effective, and build it that way with those services in it.
Thank you. Mr. Roberts, two minutes.
Go ahead. I support it, but we need to live within our means, and right now, that is not living within our means. We need a solution right now, not seven years from now. And we can do these things individually. We can attach the, we can build one center jail, and we can attach these services to it as time goes on. It doesn't all have to be done at once. And we have a 600-million, 630-some-odd-million county budget, I'm sure we can find a couple pennies in there to throw at it. So you can also get these through things like block grants, and block grants are the ones that don't have as many strings attached. So there's a way to do it, and I think that we should get it done because it's highly important, and it's in the best interest of the people, and it's what they're advocating for now.
Thank you. This is your opportunity for additional comments, Mr. Kelstrom, if you'd like to take a minute.
All right, sure. I mean, again, we need to get some more jail space immediately. You know, Joe Arpaio, Sheriff Joe, used to put up tents when he ran out of jail space. Now, maybe in California, they're against that. Personally, I'm against breaking into cars and breaking into homes too, and that seems to be happening every day. So as far as I'm concerned, we need to start thinking outside the box. We need to solve the problem right now, today, yesterday. Maybe we'll take the Stillwater Business Park, that seems to be empty, and use some of Frank's blocks and build some holding cells over there. I don't know.
Thank you. Mr. Laboue, you have an extra minute if you'd like it.
Well, I had an idea. The movie Midnight Express kind of hit me. And so after these guys are pulled up their marijuana plants, I think we ought to ship them off to DC and get them a room at one of the best motels there where Nancy Pelosi is. And a one-way ticket, all right? And I think, you know, and reward them for doing such a great job.
Thank you. Mr. Browning, one minute.
Thank you. Well, a couple of different things. First of all, with the current approach that we're looking at today, there's other fundings out there with Health and Human Services to fund pieces of that from the mental health side and the drug rehabilitation side. So those things definitely need to be used to help fund the new jail. Secondly, as good as it sounds to just put up something and throw them in there, referring back to Sheriff Joe, he has currently cost them in lawsuits $278 million to that county. So I probably wouldn't take that approach. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Roberts, you have an additional minute if you'd like. Or did you?
Yeah, I think I already took it.
Okay, good, yeah. See? It's the hardest job I have. You're good?
Yeah, yeah, I already took it.
Okay. No, we don't, we can't trade minutes. It's a good try. Okay, I'm gonna move on to question number four then. And this one, I think, starts with Mr. Laboue. Okay. "A common concern among business owners and developers is that the resource management department could be improved. What challenges face the resource management department in your opinion, and what specific What challenges face the resource management department in your opinion and what specific changes would you support?" You have two minutes.
Okay, now you're talking about the building department?
That's correct.
Okay, well, I wanted to fast-track these blocks through, uh, these houses. So if I engineered a house for a customer and the customer wants to build the same house, he has to get an engineer, it's gonna cost ten thousand dollars. Why don't we just have building plans that are already set up, that one's been approved, right? And he can buy that plan from, and pay half of the engineering costs that cost him, and then so on down the line so that the engineering costs is just pretty much done away with, okay? So we can fast-track these homes, we can fast-track, they, you're not just homes, you're building hospitals, you're building jails, you're building schools with these. Uh, these things are phenomenal, they've been out for seventy years. Uh, you put, uh, radiant floor heat in the floor with a tankless water heater or solar. Uh, you go in with twelve-volt lighting, LED lighting, so your energy costs are down. Uh, you go in with, uh, mini splits with hang on the wall, you don't need a big air conditioner and heater because they're so efficient. And it should, it's the house of the future, okay? It's the, it's the building of the future. And wood costs now are just out of sight, a piece of plywood, you can't, you know, you have to frame the house, you have to insulate the house, you have to sheet it, you have to paper it. You're done, after you pour the concrete, you're done. You put, you put, uh, uh, stucco on the outside and it's fireproof, okay? The only wood is in the trusses in the interior. So we can offer fire insurance at a fourth of what they're charging, uh, because you can't fi, get fire insurance now in a wooden house out here in the, out here in the, uh, in the woods. Uh, it's, it's, uh, prohibitable to rebuild. We need to rebuild, we're losing billions of dollars not rebuilding, uh, in taxes, in, in property taxes, okay? We gotta start rebuilding. And now you're talking about, uh, uh, new houses. I mean, we haven't even finished building the ones we lost. So, uh, anyhow, I'm just thinking outside the box. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Browning, two minutes.
Sure. I think, uh, resource management is a very interesting puzzle, it was when I got elected in Anderson as well. And what we did was, um, we just started from scratch. We ended up, um, purchasing a new system that's more streamlined, more effective. And then we really talked to our employees about making it, um, a customer service based. It is a business, and so when you walk in, you should feel like the customer. We should be there to help you. We should be there to help you understand how the process flows, what's gonna happen, what the fees are gonna be upfront, um, what to expect when you're walking through this as far as plan checks and, um, checks down the road and inspections and what those should look like. Um, and that's exactly what we've done. And as you know, today, Anderson is looked at as a model and other businesses are saying that's where I want to go because it's easier and faster to do business as it is in Anderson. And why can't we do that at other places? We absolutely can. So if you modernize your systems and you teach your employees to be customer friendly and so that they understand the rules and, and how it's going to play out for them, then they're better, and they have better adapt to come back and do business with you. I would be hard pressed to say though, that we should probably, um, cut our fees in half because that's how we pay for the installation of those things and upkeep down the road. And so, I know at Anderson, we look at those things and we say, what is the cost? Um, are, are we making a profit? If we are, then, you know, you cut those costs back, and that's what we did. Um, we are one of the lowest costs in the area in Anderson for those reasons. And, and if there's inefficiencies at the county level, I absolutely agree that we should cut those back and make sure that the, um, customer, you, that are coming in for those plans are paying exactly what this cost is gonna be for the life of the project so that we make sure that we got the upkeep for the next thirty years, that you're gonna be there. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Roberts, you have two minutes.
So, a little personal story, and, and one of the things that I think need to be, um, corrected are, is, it does need to have, um, a cut, customer service atmosphere. Um, with two of my own projects, I had to call six times for, for a permit and the permit specialist doesn't take phone calls. Um, so that's definitely something that needs to change. There was another project, I had a ten-by-twelve shed that, uh, they put a, I don't know what it, uh, something on the house, I couldn't sell the house until it was taken care of. So, we need to get out of the business of trying to force people into compliance by using their own private property against them. Um, we need to get into the business of allowing individuals to do what they want on their own property. Um, we do need to lower fees, we need to attract businesses. And when you call for a price on something, let's say a pole barn, which is another personal experience, and for the permits for this, they will say, oh, well, it's gonna be about this much. Well, as a businessman, no, that doesn't work for me, I need to know the exact cost because you're bidding this job. So they need to get more customer survey, uh, service oriented, and they need to work for the people, not against us.
Thank you. And Mr. Kelstrom, your turn, two minutes.
Okay. Uh, one of the things I want to do at the county is I want to put a reporting mechanism, a survey type of thing at the bottom of every single receipt at every county counter in, in the entire county. So, um, and the resource department will probably be one of them that we will get a few, uh, negative comments on. Uh, I hear nothing but negative stories coming back just today. I had a customer that told me this horror story of, uh, a shed and permits and, um, had a lady call me Saturday with the same thing. So, what I want to do with this thing, um, with every county department is at the bottom of your receipt, little survey, just like you get at Taco Bell, Target, Walmart, every business out there. How did we do today? How can we improve? How would you rate us? Um, certain departments out there, like I've been going to their register or voter's office, the county clerk's office quite a bit, everybody in there treats me like a customer, treats me with respect, they're friendly, they're helpful, they're fantastic. Um, had to go to records department, uh, get a birth certificate for me and then later on, one for my boy, same thing, those people were fantastic, knowledgeable, helpful. Um, I want the culture to change, so I want every county department to be like those ones that I've just mentioned that I've recently, uh, visited. Um, when that person walks through the door, number one, that's a customer. Number two, that's probably a taxpaying citizen and you're tax-funded. So, that's your quasi-boss, that's a customer, let's treat them accordingly. Now, I want a copy of this report or this survey to go to every board of supervisors, the department head and the CAO of the county. If, you know, we're gonna get some, some great comments, like, I would have been happy to go after the records department, say, hey, these ladies were fantastic, keep up the good work, whatever you're doing, you're hiring the right people, you're training them correctly, they're knowledgeable, keep up the good work, you're doing great. Now, these horror stories after horror story after horror story that I hear of people putting through the meat grinder at building department and code enforcement, those there, um, if you're getting nothing but complaints from a department, that department head needs to be called in on the floor, change your culture, change, retrain your employees, do something, or we will replace you, plain and simple.
Thank you. So, Mr. Laboo, you have one minute additional if you'd like it.
Okay, I'll tell you how I do it with an airplane. I was an inspector, so I signed an airplane off as an annual and it was good for a year. Uh, I'd go to jail for manslaughter if I did anything wrong. So basically, what I do is I take an inspection of Shasta County. I take a look at the books, I take a look at how they're, each, uh, operation is running, okay? I'd look at the mandatory AD notes, which are, uh, things that, uh, in the past have caused airplanes to crash and stuff. So that's what I would do, I would do a thorough investigation, make a list of all the things that need correcting, look for corrosion, corruption, look for, uh, cracks and, I use my, uh, my nose, I use my ears, I use a hammer, I use, uh, touch, uh, there's all sorts of things that you inspect an airplane with, Magna Fluxing Zyglow, and we can use all these techniques in a sense of auditing the county and finding out, now I've worked for the county, I, I retired twenty years ago from road department. So, uh, I saw, I was, uh, chief shop steward for SEA. Uh, I know how they treat the employees.
Thank you. Mr. Browning, one minute.
Thank you. Is it on?
Perfect.
It's on. Yeah, uh, we need to, first of all, understand that, uh, we, did you know we only have one code enforcement for all of Shasta County? That amazes me. Um, and so, the one thing we're knowing, which you hear stories about now, is we go out to your property and we violate you for everything else except for the item that we're working on. And that has to stop. Uh, it's what we stopped in Anderson, because what happens is when you say no enough, we just build it anyway. And so, if we have the code enforcement, just go out there and take care of the item that they're there to take care of, whether, what they're there for the inspection and go away, that will make a lot of other. We need two more code enforcement officers and I'll tell you why. We need one just for ma, a marijuana eradication, for all the illegal grows, one assigned to the deputy, one assigned to code enforcement on the houses, and then the third one assigned to all these, uh, people that are living on other people's property along the streets and, um, get their vans off the road and make sure that we're taking care of those that are living illegally on other people's property.
Thank you. Mr. Roberts, one minute.
I have to agree with Mr. Kelstrom on his idea, I like that idea and I think it's a good one and I, I would seek to implement that as well. Yeah, we need, we need them to work for us, you shouldn't have to tear out a pool to get solar, so, that's, that's where I stand on that.
Thank you. And then finally, Mr. Kelstrom, one minute.
Yeah, we were, uh, talking about the code enforcement and, um, I actually came up in Shingle Town the other night and, uh, you know, I, I was saying, again, they, they find your shed that's illegal or they find your deck that you didn't have a permit for or whatever. And, uh, it's frustrating, um, there's a, a, a man in, um, Anderson that was, ran out off the corner of a Plaza Buena Ventura by code enforcement because he was selling lawn art. Uh, maybe he's a retired veteran, he's selling lawn art, he now sells it in Williams behind the seventy-six station because Shasta County ran him out of here because that was a major crime. And what was frustrating to me is like, yeah, the guy probably drove past two homeless camps and an illegal marijuana grow to get this old veteran to stop selling lawn art in the side of the road. You know, and I said the same thing in Shingle Town the other night. Your drone goes over the top of the house, you know, flies over two marijuana gardens and a homeless camp and, uh, you know, wants to ding you and send code enforcement out because you have a ten-foot by twelve-foot or, or twelve-foot by fourteen-foot garden shed. And, eh, eh, you know, this stuff's just got to stop. There's more important things to do than harass law-abiding citizens.
Thank you. The next question, we begin with Mr. Browning. "Homelessness and mental illness continues to plague the state and the county of Shasta. As a supervisor, how would you address these problems and what is the role of the county of Shasta in mitigating them?" Two minutes.
Thank you. Well, I think Anderson's done a good job with their homeless. Um, we instituted a no camping ordinance, um, which has cleaned out a lot of that. We also instituted a no pain handling ordinance, which also extremely helped with, with that situation as well. Um, but we do have to focus on our, our mental health. And I think that's much broader and much deeper than any of us could ever imagine. But what I do know is that when we did Project Room Key, for example, it was ineffective. Um, we're now re, we're now rebuilding those hotels, um, those over and over and over again. That was not a project that worked for us. Um, and I'm, you know, I think we need to evaluate Health and Human Services third-party and understanding, are they really giving us the best bang for our buck? And if they're not, let's move on something that does. We've gotta be broader looking than just hearing go, well, that's what somebody else did, let's just use that. I think it's, it's much bigger than that, we've gotta look at what's worked in other places, what's not worked in other places, um, understand what those costs are gonna be and go over, get those grants that are gonna be effective to us. And when they're not doing what they're supposed to do, then we hold them to the fire. They work for us as the third party, you as the citizens of the third party. And so we gotta understand what's working and not's working and make sure that we're implementing the right projects for the right reason.
Thank you. Mr. Roberts, same question, two minutes.
We need to do program audits and we need to figure out which programs are working and which ones are not. And then we need to get rid of the ones that are not and put the funding into the ones that are. And I think it's, um, it's a mixture of things, there's a lot of mental illness, but there's just a lot of crime in general. There's people who refuse to get better, you can't do anything for them, but make it more comfortable to go be homeless somewhere else. Make it highly uncomfortable to be homeless in Shasta County, it's that simple.
Thank you. Mr. Kelstrom, two minutes.
Okay, so, the homeless issue, I think the first thing we need to do is differentiate between homeless and transient and criminal transients. Um, I think it's two totally separate groups. Um, there is some homeless people out there and for them, I would do everything I could to possibly help them, give them a hand up, get them back into society, get them back into a home, get them back into a job, whatever. And I think there's plenty of programs now that enable those people that want help to get that help. Um, the other criminal transients, um, you can throw all the money you want at them, you can send them through every program you want, you can give them every hand up, and if they don't want help, they're not gonna take help and it's, you're not gonna change them. So you're kind of wasting your money on them. Now, um, the mental health aspect of it, um, there, we definitely have a mental health aspect. Um, I've actually talked to a pastor that works with a lot of the, um, homeless people and transients population, so to speak. And, uh, you have some mental health issues and you have some drug-induced or substance-induced mental health issues. Um, he surprisingly, it gets back to jail space, same thing. If you can get these people off the street and get them into a cell, get them cleaned up, get them a thirty-day jail sentence, fifteen-day jail sentence, whatever it is, get it out of their system and then they may be at a point where they want help. You have to want help in order to accept the help. But this revolving door, we turn them back on the street and, and especially if they have some mental issues with addictions or alcohol, as soon as they turn back out, they're right back to where they started from. So we need to get them off the street. We need to, uh, find some jail beds, get them off the street and then offer them services at that point when they have a clear and clean mind.
Thank you. Mr. Laboo, your turn.
Okay, I, I would like to thank Dave Gassman, he was a psychiatrist here years ago. Uh, I ran into him in church one day and, uh, I said, Dave, I says, we gotta get, uh, mental health back in Shasta County. He says, where did it go? And I said, well, Dave, they, our supervisors have done away with the annex, the Crystal Creek, uh, the mental health, uh, you know, we, we, we're losing here, okay? We need to get back on track here. So, uh, what I would do with mental health, right now, if you're, if you're, uh, fifty-one, fifty, or whatever it is, they send you to Sacramento, okay? Let's say a mother's having problems feeding her kids, this, that, and things are kinda getting out of hand. And why send her to Sacramento, away from her family? Why don't we treat them here? And like I say, we can treat the other patients from other counties, we can be the hub, okay? Now about homelessness, you know, uh, I, I worked with a guy, uh, we, we did engine overhauls, his name was Mario. And, uh, he got his A and P license out of Tracy's prison, okay? So we can rehab these guys, uh, i- i- and we can train them, we could train these guys how to build these houses, they're so easy to build. You put two corners up, you draw a string, uh, straight and level and plumb, and away you go. It's so simple. And we can now supply the contractors out here to build these new modern homes. How much, and, uh, so anyhow, uh, I, I think out of the box, I, I like to think that things are possible. Uh, I don't like to reinvent the wheel, I like to look at what other people have done and what our county was like. And, uh, so, uh, I, I believe it's possible that if we all put together, the more minds you put together, uh, th- the more problems you solve. And so I think it's all in the committees. I think we, uh, you know, you can, uh, text us, uh, email us, uh, your suggestions and we'll get on board.
Thank you. So everyone had a chance to give their two-minute responses there, now we move into one-minute, uh, additional comments, starting with Mr. Browning.
Sure, we definitely have a mental health issue, but I think we have a bigger issue and it's been touched on a little bit up here, and that's a drug issue. And in order to come about the drug issue, we've gotta understand, you know, where it's coming from. And I understand, uh, from the sheriff just recently that there's actually been a fentanyl task force, um, that's come out from the state and federal government, so that will give some, some port, support to our sheriff to get some of that stuff off the street. But we've gotta have the detention center, which has those things in it. Because right now, what happens is when me, Baron Browning, say I have a problem and Browning, say I have a problem and I want drug help, drug rehabilitation help, they send me to a third party. Well, I figured out the system, so in two days, I just walk out the door because they can't hold me. But if you have the jail that can hold them and you have all those services there, then when they act up, then the sheriff can just send them back to the cell. And so then you keep those people in there that are really wanting help. And yes, they need to get dried out to understand they need help. I get that. But if you have a big enough jail to hold them, to let them allowed to get dried out to understand that they actually in the right mind to get help, then they can go to those facilities that are on campus and they're held accountable. And that's what we want, held accountable. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Roberts, one minute.
Forgive me for not differentiating between homeless and transients. My mistake. Yes, we need, we do need to work on these things in, in terms of with, with law enforcement. But I think, I think that the, the wagon wheel idea was great because it provided a solution. It's not great in the aspect that it's going to take seven years to build and it's going to be X amount of dollars. But we need to start there somewhere where we can agree on and then see what we can do for possibly cheaper or most certainly a lot quicker.
Thank you. Yeah, sure. All right, Mr. Kelstrom, one minute.
So a lot of the mental health dollars, it depends on where they come from and the funds that you can spend, whether they're in a locked facility or they're free to go. So, you know, the wagon wheel of justice, I hope that we have addressed that because, you know, again, there's certain programs and, and certain monies that you cannot offer the mental health services to somebody that's incarcerated or behind bars. They have to be released into the program and then a different money comes into play at that point. So again, the wagon wheel of justice hopefully will, you know, mitigate all those. But as far as having them locked up and offering them mental health services, there's only certain, certain dollars and certain programs that you can offer when they're not free to go. So that's about it.
Thank you. And finally, Mr. Labou, one additional minute.
Okay, Shasta County was offered, I think BART down in San Francisco does drug rehab. They come up here. It doesn't cost the county a thing. They, they charge Medi-Cal and Medicare with the expense. They, they were willing to come up here and set up, they do everything. They do heroin, they do meth, they do everything, okay? We were offered that, okay? And they took a, they took a mental health group out of Chico and they weren't qualified to do much of anything other than I think maybe heroin, okay? So we, and I think the thing that went down was maybe there was some corruption there in a sense of where the committee chose the Chico firm other than BART, okay? So the money's there. The people are willing to come up here and help us out. The other thing about homelessness and stuff like that, you know, we need to put up, we, we need to get busy and, and start off small. Maybe give them, you know, take some property that we own, put toilets in, put a kitchen in.
Thank you. Let me just make sure I've got this right. Okay. Yes. All right. This next question will begin with Mr. Roberts. We're on question six now. And this again comes from the, the chamber member survey recently. Inflation and the rising cost of goods was identified as having an adverse effect on more than 93% of those who responded to the recent chamber membership survey. And 2/3 of respondents say attracting and retaining employees is also an issue for them. Businesses and government agencies both struggle with employee recruitment in Shasta County. How will you lead to attract talented professionals to fill county positions? And how would you keep current top performers? How would you increase the morale of the staff at the county? You have two minutes.
That's a tough one. First of all, everybody needs to feel valued. So we need to, we do need to make our employees feel valued. And we need to let people know that when they do come to Shasta County, they're going to want to move their families here. So they need to know that it's safe. They need to know that they can take their kids to the park and not have to worry about getting mugged or, or getting stabbed or anything like that. So the first thing would be to get our crime, crime under control and making people know that when they do move to Shasta County, it's going to be safe for their family. And that they're going to go to good schools and that they will work for a government that's, local government that's good to them, that's going to pay them well if they are performing. And we do need to do performance evaluations.
Thank you. It's a long question, I know, but I am happy to repeat it should any of you like me to do so. Okay, Mr. Kelstrom, you've got two minutes.
Okay, so, so back in the day, it used to be that you took a private sector job because the money was better there. But you took a public sector job because you, you know, it was more stable. You might have had better retirement, better benefits. Nowadays, it seems like the government sector jobs have better pay and better benefits and are more stable. So as far as keeping good people, again, maybe not only do the survey to see how the departments are doing, maybe we need to have, I mean, I know every department has a human resources people can go to. Maybe people don't feel comfortable there. Maybe we should do a, like a whistleblower type of a, a survey also or a website that they can go to and, you know, let their problems be heard and vented and, and get the word to the supervisors. So again, the morale that I've seen in the departments that I've been to seems to be extremely well. It seems to be very good. So, and, and employees seem to be very happy. And I haven't heard of a whole lot of turnover with county jobs. Now, the department heads are a different story. And I know that we keep hearing things, you know, we have to compare ourselves to Santa Barbara or San Diego in, in order to get the, the best people. You know, I, I personally think we have the best place to live. I mean, I, I would live, gladly live here for half of what I could make in LA or San Francisco or, you know, some other horrible place. And quite frankly, I do. Our, our, you know, regular median wage is lower than San Francisco and Los Angeles and San Diego. And there's a reason for that. It's because we have a beautiful place to live. We have a great place to live. It's a great county to live in. So as far as us having to pay as much as the rest of the counties, I think just offering where we live should be an incentive enough to, to get the qualified people here. And I think we have a lot of qualified people right here in this county too, if we were able to train them.
Thank you. Mr. Labou, you have two minutes.
Okay, well, I retired from Shasta County. I know what the employees, they're just satisfactions and they're gripes and stuff. And I used to tell them, you know, I said, you need to buy a house, you know, that's your best investment. So I was a realtor for 10 years. And your best investment is a house, okay? It goes up in value. Well, now, people were moving up here from the Bay Area and stuff. They were retiring. They were buying five acres with horses and stuff like this for, I think at the time was maybe three or 400,000. And they had twice the house. They, they took the extra money. They sold for millions and their house in the Bay Area and put it in the bank. And that's the way things went. So then price houses have gone up. Now with the fires and stuff, we've lost 45,000 homes. If we don't start building, okay, we're never going to catch up, okay? We need to get contractors going. We need to get these guys that, we need to train contractors. We need to get them building these houses. You cannot afford fire insurance out in the outlying areas. You've just basically got the city here, the valley, where there's no trees. If you're going to go out and build in the trees, you can't afford fire insurance. You can't find, you can't get a loan. So, you know, we need new technologies. We need, we can do this, okay? But it's, we, we need to jumpstart this thing, get it going. And that's through the planning department, through getting factories here, building these blocks, putting, getting good paying jobs. We can do this, okay? It's, it's feasible, but we need to get going on it. So you're not going to bring the price of houses down. Now you got solar, now you got sprinklers, now, you know, I mean, it's, the, the price keeps going up and up. So, but, so I think apartments are the thing to go. We're going to build these apartments. They're going to be energy efficient and get our, get these young kids coming out of high school so they can get a job, afford to live. I can't bring the food. I'd like to put a pipeline in, but, you know, that's, that's not up to me. We don't have any gas or oil here. So, thank you.
Thank you. And then finally Baron, Mr. Browning, I should say. You have two minutes as well. Do you need the question repeated?
No, sir.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Well, first of all, I think that morale from our employees has been proven in Anderson starts with the leaders. And the leaders are actually our supervisors, which is what we're running for. And so the leadership starts with, you know, us treating each other like human beings. That's where it starts. At least for me. And that's what we've done in Anderson. We all get along very well. We don't always agree, and that's okay. But what happens is, we get to throw ideas on the wall as we're talking through solutions. And even though I don't agree with 80% of what somebody says, when I'm not listening because I'm angry and missing the 20% that could help the solution. And so you listen to everything that everybody says, whether they're coming up there to talk for their three minutes, or whether they're another supervisor. And you listen to their fullest and you snag all those ideas and you come out with the great things, similar to what we've done in Anderson, time and time again, and make it a great county that it should be. The way you get business here is you, as we've done in Anderson, is bring an economic development forward as a county. And having those businesses that are in our county be on that, in that program. And they will then go out and seek others, as we've done in Anderson, and you start capturing businesses that are going to come in. So US Offsites is one of the eight. We just had a company come to us just over a week ago, another manufacturer that's going to line up right behind US Offsites with another 200 jobs. The jobs are available, but we've got to create the atmosphere in the county for them to want to come here. And that's business friendly. Our attitude as supervisors will get those things done. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Roberts, you have one minute for additional comment.
As far as, as, um, the supervisors being the leaders, yeah, that's true. But they should take their instruction from the people. And they refuse to do, when they refuse to do that, it, it delegitimizes their view as a leader. And there's always going to be two sides. That's the sad reality. There's always going to be two sides. We need to figure out where we can come together and start on things that we do agree with again. And that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Kelstrom, one minute.
Okay, I really don't have a whole lot extra to add to the whole thing. So like I said, I, I think we have the best place to live. You know, I, I was a shop steward for the Teamsters. So as far as the workers in our county go, the low-level workers, I, you know, as long as their morale is good, I think we have people lined up for some of those jobs. The middle management and upper management, those may be a little harder to replace. You know, some of them, we have to take a hard look at them and see if, how many of those middle managers we need. How many, how many layers of protection do we need between the guy filling in potholes and, you know, the department head? Same thing with, you know, the nurse administering shots. How many, how many levels of insulation do we need between her and the department head? So I, I think this is a great county. And I mean, I, I want to live here. I love living here. I plan on staying here. And, you know, I, I would take a job at half the price just to live where I live now.
Thank you. Mr. Labou, you have an additional minute if you'd like.
Oh, boy. Like I said, you know, I, I, I've been here 50 years. I've enjoyed. I've raised a family, had four kids. We got good colleges. We got good schools. We got, you know, I do have some problems with some of the schools. I volunteered for a welding class to teach a welding class at Anderson High School. And they were welding galvanize. It's one of the most poisonous things you can, you can weld, okay? It's lead and zinc and everything else. And I asked the teacher, I said, why are you welding this? I says, you're, you're polluting the kids, you know? He says, well, your fingernails are not green. He says, you're not a welder, okay? Been welding for 50 years, okay? So I brought it to the school board. They threw out my notes that I had on how poisonous it was and stuff. So we have problems here and we need to deal with them, okay? They can literally poison your kids in school and get away with it. And it's, it's really, really sad, so.
Thank you. Mr. Browning, one additional minute? Okay. Then we'll move to the next question, question number seven, beginning with Mr. Kelstrom. It's raining right now, but it hasn't been. So, this is related to drought and wildfire. The continued drought has reached a critical stage with the threat of depleted wells, restricted water deliveries, and draconian cutbacks. Related to the drought is the continued threat of wildfires. As a supervisor, how would you address these crises and what's the role of Shasta County in addressing these threats? You have two minutes.
So the wildfire is a little bit easier to address than the drought. I mean, the drought is the drought. As far as the drought goes, I know the Delta Smelt has a pretty good lawyer. And they seem to sue the Department of Reclamation to take care of their needs. So I'm thinking maybe our farmers and ranchers and our citizens need to find that same lawyer that's representing the smelt. And maybe we need to sue on behalf of the ranchers and farmers and the people of Shasta County rather than a smelt. So as far as the fires go, I would like to actually write a county ordinance as to, and I don't have the numbers. I'd have to talk to a forester and I have to talk to the resource manager. But I would like to create a county ordinance that limits the metric tons per acre on our forest floors right now to state and federal lands. I don't want to do the, the private landowner. I don't want code enforcement coming to their house and telling, you know, old Mrs. Widow Johnson that she needs to remove the pine tree or they're going to lean her house. So I don't want to do it to private landowners. But state and federal lands within our county borders, I want a management plan. I want their management plan to correspond with our ordinance. And I'm told that they will tweak their plan to try to stay within our ordinance. So I want to limit the amount of metric tons on our forest floors. Now, I used to hunt up above Shasta Lake. So the area between Shasta Lake, Dunsmere, and over to McLeod, if you look on a map, it's a giant checkerboard. It's a huge giant checkerboard. Every other square mile is Sierra Pacific Private or it's Shasta Trinity National Forest. And our trick was, you can only camp on the forest land. And we spent weeks and weeks and weeks trying to just find one little section of forest land that you could actually pull the truck off the side of the road and put a tent up. You couldn't camp on Sierra Pacific land, so we, you know, we didn't want to break the law. But their land was thin. They had log landings. They had turnouts. They had wide, you know, great spots on the road. The trees were thinned. You could have easily camped there. National Forest was a mess. We need to fix that.
Thank you. Mr. Labou, two minutes.
Okay, well, I fought the Yellowstone Fire and, you know, they said, well, let it burn because it was lightning. And we walked out probably three or four miles just on logs that were down. I mean, it was terrible. The other thing is, you got to deal with the fuel. That's, we, we need better forest, forest management. We need fire crews. We had, I think, Sugar, Sugar Pine up here shutting down. We got the, the prison in Susanville shutting down. We're, they're releasing 79,000 prisoners on top of us. Governor Newsom thought, you know, well, each prisoner's worth a million dollars. So he would fund the state by letting them all go on us. So we need fire crews. I believe with the marijuana grows, we could probably have 35 fire crews up at, at Crystal Creek in different areas, supported by the county, not by the state. We can clear, use them for clearing the brush and stuff like this and get some fire breaks going. We need, oh, just have brain freeze, believe it or not. Anyhow, that's, that's how we can do it. We need to, we need to manage the forest better. The other thing was water. We just spent, how many billions of dollars on a bullet train? Did we have a bullet train? Why didn't they take those billions of dollars and make a, a desalination plant down in LA where they got the water, okay? Israel's doing it to the desert. They're selling water to the Arabs, okay? For every two gallons of saltwater, you end up with one gallon of fresh water. And you take the other gallon of salty water, you can't put it back in the ocean because it sinks and it disturbs the, the ecosystem. So you pump it over to the Salt and Sea, right? And Salt and Sea is going empty, right? And now you make table salt with it and you mine it for the Epsom salt, stuff like this for fertilizers, okay?
Thank you. Mr. Browning, two minutes.
Sure, thank you. I've worked for the last almost four years in, in the summers through my company in the fire world. Been on numerous fires and watched millions and millions of acres over the last four years go up in smoke. I don't know that there's a solution that we can give the state that they're actually going to do. But really what we have to do is work on our home front. And that's through the fire safe councils. If you look at the Shingle Town Fire Safe Council, and now we formed a Shasta County Fire Safe Council, they have gotten over a million dollars in Shingle Town to take care of their brush on the side of theirs. And they've done an absolutely fantastic job with it. But they need our supportive supervisors to get more of that $2 billion funding that just came out, to fund that even more, so that we can do that countywide, so that we're taking care of ours. Because we're not going to take care of the state, I guarantee you that. But we've got to take care of our home front. And you do that through grants and supporting of the fire safe councils that are being propped up now, including the one in Shingle Town. And we modeled after that one where they're just doing an amazing job of clearing out their lands, which are our county lands, of all that brush and making it more fire safe that that is. When it comes to the water, we have two water districts that are in real trouble. We have Bella Vista and Happy Valley. They're, they're in trouble. So those people are only getting 55 gallons. So who do we pick? Who gets to take a shower today? Who gets to take a shower tomorrow? Tomorrow? If you have a family of five, who do we get to pick? Well, we just got this ARPA money, right? We take a million dollars of that ARPA money to each one of them. The county registers the funds. We go and buy the water that's available out there through ACID or any, anyone else. And we get, make sure that we get that water to those two districts that are in trouble, so those citizens. And that's what that money's for. It's for our citizens. And that's the way it should be used. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Roberts, two minutes.
So I'm glad that the Shingle Town Fire Safe Council was mentioned because they're doing the job that the federal government and the state government has supposed to been doing this whole time. And they're doing it because they got together because they're worried that they're going to get burned out of town. They need equipment, they need supplies, and they've asked for funding. And I think that it would be in the best interest of the county to issue And I think that it would be in the best interest of the county to issue them that funding at this point, because they are using it the way they say that they are using it, and they're actually doing a really good job up there. Long-term, I like the ordinance ideas, I just think that we need to get really, really creative at what we do, and I think we can do that.
Thank you. Now to the one-minute additional comments, Mr. Kelstrom, your option.
Well, I just want to point out, there's more than two water districts that are in trouble. There's Jones Valley, there's Bella Vista, there's Happy Valley, and near and dear to my heart, District Five is Anderson-Cottonwood Irrigation District, is getting zero water in their canal this year. That has never happened, they have 1914 water rights, and they have never been denied water, and this year they're being denied water. So, all the ranches and all the farms in Anderson-Cottonwood are going to be dry and dead this year. All those, you know, cows and everything else, there is no water in ACID. So, we have, it's quite a water crisis. I mean, it's definitely more than just a couple districts, it's pretty much our entire county is in a water, is in a water crisis.
Mr. Laboue, you have one minute.
What was the question?
It is related to, "The continued drought has reached a critical stage with the threat of depleted wells, restricted water deliveries, and draconian cutbacks. Related to the drought is the continued threat of wildfire. As a supervisor, how would you address these crises and what's the role of Shasta County in addressing these threats?"
I pray for a ring. I don't know, I don't know how else you're going to solve it, you know what I mean? If you put liens on these people growing marijuana plants up in the mountains, okay, and making your wells go dry, we can have a slush fund to dig your wells deeper. You know, that's about the only way you're going to get water, okay? So, we've got to deal with these grows, they're, and we've got to deal with, and there's not much you're going to do about the water. I can't make it. So, it's, it's going to be tough, I don't know, and we've got to be fair with everybody. So, that's what we need to do. Get a committee together and get some ideas.
Thank you. Mr. Browning, additional minute? You'll pass, okay? And Mr. Roberts? Pass. Okay. So, we found our way to the final opportunity, and really, this is generalized as closing remarks. So, beginning with Mr. Laboue, you have an opportunity for the next two minutes to kind of bring it home, particularly through the lens of the local business community.
Okay, for the local business community, you know, like I say, we need to be manufacturing in here, get jobs in here, we need to tap into the building, that's, that's the thing we do here in Shasta County, okay? We need to start building, okay? The other thing is supplies, I mean, it's hard for builders to get supplies. I went down to get an electrical box and they were out. So, that's going to be another problem, is having the materials to build with and stuff. So, we need to figure that out. And what was the other part of the question?
It's just whatever you'd like to close with, related to the business community.
I'm sorry, I'm tired here. But, you know, for the business, I think we need to center on what we can do here. The building, there's plenty of grocery stores, but, you know, I don't know what the food's going to be running out. But I believe in committees, I believe that we need to tap all the minds that we can get to solve problems. And it's called R&amp;D. Most manufacturers today, you take a look at Apple and Tesla and stuff like that, they got wonderful R&amp;D research and development. And they're doing phenomenal things, and I know Shasta County can do the same if we just tap into every one of you out there, right? And get some suggestions, and we can turn this thing around. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Browning, two minutes for closing remarks.
Thank you. First again, I want to thank the chamber for holding this tonight. And most of all, for all of you that are here or watching online, you are the ones that want to be an informed voter. And so, I so appreciate that either you came out or you're watching online to understand who your next supervisor should be. And I just want to start with, I actually have a proven track record. Anderson is a proven track record of my abilities for problem solving and solutions. And that starts with public safety, on down to economic growth and development, to planning and development through building houses, zoning, on down to what our families really need and want in our community. And we've done all of those things, and we'll continue to do those things in Shasta County because that's what's important to you. Our citizens have come to us and said, "Here's our things that we want done." And you've named them. You want a jail, you want public safety, you want fire protection, you want resource management fixed. Those are things that we, I have done before, and I have a proven track record of doing them. So, again, voteforbaron.com is my website. Go on, you can learn all about me, and thank you once again for coming tonight.
Mr. Roberts, two minutes.
Thank you guys all for coming, I know how hard it is to get to these things. I'm a father, I've got kids, sports and school and things like that. You can learn more about me on my website, which is robertsforfive.com, robertsforfive.com. You can send me a message, I have the Facebook pages up, all that stuff. And, no, I have experience as a father, I'm a businessman here in Shasta County, I know a lot of people, and I'm just, I just really care, and I see something great for Shasta County, and I think that that's going to come through leadership that listens to the people. Leaders push the envelope, followers don't, they just comply.
Thank you. And finally, Mr. Kelstrom, two minutes.
Yeah, once again, thank everybody for being here, and thank you, Mr. Mangus, for hosting this. If you can call me Mister, I'll call you Mister. And thanks Carl for putting this on the radio, and thanks for everybody watching online. So, yeah, from a business standpoint, again, I'm a businessman, I started managing business when I was 19 years old. I know how to run a business, I would like to run the county. I am not a politician, nor do I want to be a career politician. I think that's part of our problem, how we got to where we are. One of the things I want to do when I get on the Board of Supervisors is I want to vote for term limits, I want to install term limits on the Board of Supervisors. I think this should be your civic duty to go and run for the Board, get on the Board, do some of your programs, do some of the things you want to do. If you can't do that in four years or eight years, you probably weren't the man for the job, and step aside and let the next person come in. I think it should be a civic duty that you're doing, not a 20-year career path or a 24-year career path. I want to do away with that, I just want to give the county back to the people. We the people are who I want to represent, and we the people are, you know, who supports me, so that's enough.
Well, so with that, ladies and gentlemen, please join me in thanking our candidates tonight, Frank Laboue, Baron Browning, Colt Roberts, and Chris Kelstrom. Thank you for showing the courage to step forward and run. Can't be easy to make that decision, maybe it is for some of you, and we're grateful that you have stepped forward to do that. I'd like to also thank KCNR and 96.5 and 1460 for simulcasting this this evening. Thank you to Carl and Linda Bott and Pat Karch. We'd like to thank the members of the local media here with us this evening as well in amplifying this message, as well as the Ferris Wheel Films team. They will be helping us to put this recorded video out to a larger audience in a week and a half or so, I think. I'm getting a thumbs up, I think, yes, I am, okay, thank you. It's going to be great sound and video, they promised, promised me. And also, I want to thank all of our current elected officials who are with us in the room as well, thank you for your service to our community, and those of you in other races who have chosen to throw your hats in the ring as well. So, to all of you here tonight, thanks for your engagement in our community, in the business community, and this democratic process. So, do me a favor and get out the vote for June 7th, and have a great night.